Well, the meeting is ordered. Mr. Hunter, if you can lead us in the pledge of allegiance, please.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let the record show that Mr. Umbyhan and his department are absent. The rest are here. Mr. Moore, has public notice been given?
Yes, it has.
Public comment. For policy 0167.3, anyone wishing to participate in the period of public comment must be resident of the Richland School District, a parent or legal guardian of an enrolled district student or an enrolled district student. Persons wishing to participate must be physically present at the meeting and must register in advance. Total time allotment of 30 minutes will be given for public comment. Each participant shall be given three minutes to address the board. A translator may be used to translate verbal communication to the board. If such translation services are used, six minutes shall be given to that participant with only the first three minutes being designated to the total time allotment. Speakers are not permitted to make inflammatory comments, use inappropriate language or gestures, attack specific persons, or make a specific person the subject of their remarks. Please see policy 0167.3 for a complete list of requirements and restrictions. If a person is unable to adhere to these rules, they may be directed to end their comments. Does Steele do we have any one sign up for public comment?
No.
Thank you. For the courts district minister report.
Okay, so just a couple of things. One, our roofing project up here at the Richland Center High School recently started, so you'll see some work being done here. That project is expected to be completed by the time students are back early September. And then, secondly, just a reminder to the board, we have our committee meeting night Wednesday, July 17. Buildings and property will be at 6:00 PM. That will be here in the IMC. Personnel negotiations and budget development will also be at 6 o'clock. That will be in the district office conference room. Curriculum will be at 7:30 in the conference room. And then, as it sits right now, policy will not be needed for Wednesday, the 17th. If we would get the latest updates from Neola, I'll make sure to let the board know this week. Otherwise, we will take care of those in August. Any questions from the board? Thank you.
For me, the board member reports.
I was late to last meeting, so to recap, curriculum assessment met on Wednesday, June 19th. The things we covered is current year's schedule at a glance, the AGR year-end report, which I believe will be coming later to the board, open enrollment data, and then established rules and priorities for the 24-25 school year. Also, that same night, buildings, property, and transportation met at 6:00 PM. We covered current year's schedule at a glance, referendum project updates, which will be a regular topic, and it's just understanding the upcoming timeline to start. Roofing project updates have been covered by us to board, which was supposed to be they'd arrive within two weeks, and they haven't. Mower specs, you'll find that later on action items. We were needing to replace two mowers, and so we have bids back for that. We made a motion to approve and recommend the passage of the LP quote, which you'll see on tonight's action as well. We're going to be looking to schedule building walkthroughs of all four buildings over the next couple of months prior to any referendum projects. And then, a discussion on some district-owned property in preparations for referendum concerning flood type. And then, just prior to tonight's meeting, we did our buildings, property, and opened up the bid specs, and we have a motion that we will be acting on as a board tonight, but we recommended the purchase of two Kubota zero-turn mowers at $17,800 each, and that is from McFarlands and Sauk City. And that's all.
Mr. Hunter? 4C, AGR year-end report.
Okay, so this is the year-end report for AGR, achievement gap reduction, that Mr. Hunter was just alluding to. Dr. Sherri Johnson is not here tonight, but she did record a video presentation of the AGR in her year-end report. Just summarizing her video, we did show that we reduced the gap in several areas between low-income and other students, but in some instances, it did grow. Remember, this is just a snapshot, though. Students move in or transfer into our district at various times, and that can certainly skew the data depending on when that is. And then, Dr. Johnson also mentioned that overall, while not necessarily AGR-related, our percentage of proficient students grew substantially year over year. So, we have much higher percentage of students this year, generally speaking, than we had last year. If you have any questions, I'm happy to try to answer, and if Mrs. Brown or Mrs. Hardier are here as well, we'll give you the answers to questions from Dr. Johnson when she gets back. Okay, thank you.
5A, approval of prior meeting minutes. I move to approve the prior meeting minutes of June 24, 2024. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Mr. Dowdner. Any discussion? Mr. Van Landy?
Aye.
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 Financial items. A, approval of statement of cash.
I move we approve the statement of cash dated July 3, 2024.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Bosworth, do you have anything to add?
Nothing to add on the statement of cash.
Thank you. Any discussion? Mr. Dowdner?
Aye.
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 6B, approval of invoices.
I move we approve Community First Bank general checking accounts checks number 86444 through 86494, ACH number 232401670 through 242501753, and EFT 202300108 through 20230115 for a net total of $695,423.14. This is for the purpose of general operating costs of the district.
Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Mr. Hunter. Mr. Bosworth, anything to add?
Yeah, a few things to add for tonight's. The first would be on page two, right near the top, you see a payment to the Laysland Public Finance, $15,866. The third, CCLC Sting Traverse, has been secured, and that's our annual lease payment for that vehicle. On page three, about a third of the way down, there's a payment to the City Richland Center for $33,755. That's for part of the school resource officer, and just a reminder, that's paid through Fund 80, which is levied in addition to our normal Fund 10 levy. And then, the third thing I would point out is on pages four and five, you may notice a couple duplicate payments in there, some minuses in there. There was a glitch when we uploaded some of our ACH information to Community First Bank, and whereas some of our vendors received notifications that your payment is coming, some of the payments didn't come. So fortunately, they alerted us that quickly. Thank you for doing that. And then, we figured out which ones didn't process. Community First couldn't figure out what happened either, but either way, we voided those and issued repayments. And then, finally, on page seven, about two-thirds of the way down there, you can see a payment to Cobusson. It says 23-24 calendar shortfall. The Bussin contract is based on 178 student days, and then, there's a clause in there that says if we actually drop below 174 student days, then we have to do a makeup payment. We got 173, so we have one extra payment to make, and so that $5,247 is roughly 85% of what we would pay on a normal student day. So that's why that extra payment is in there.
Thank you. Any questions or discussion? Mr. Hunter?
Aye.
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 Consent agenda items. Ms. Seal?
Motion to accept a donation of funds valued at $1,015.99 from the Wisconsin Physical Education and Health Association for the Richland Center High School FI Ed Department per policy 7230. Motion to accept the donation valued at approximately $200 from the Premier Co-op for the Richland Center Intermediate School Greenhouse for Students per policy 7230. Motion to accept the donation of money valued approximately $3,000 from the Richland County Campus Foundation for the Richland Center Intermediate School Greenhouse for Students per policy 7230. Motion to accept the donation of money valued at approximately $75 from the Zimmerman Consulting to help with the third-grade year-end trips per policy 7230. Motion to accept the donation of books for the Richland Center Intermediate School Free Book Fair at approximately $200 from various Donors' Choice participants per policy 7230. Motion to accept the donation of two Gatorade Performance Packages and Weight Room Equipment valued at approximately $5,500 from the Richland Center Athletic Booster Club per policy Motion to approve the suggested revisions for the 24-25 Primary School Student and Family Handbook. Motion to approve the suggested revisions and additions for the 24-25 Intermediate Student Parent Handbook to comply with the state and federal laws, and motion to approve the suggested revisions and additions to the 24-25 High School Student Handbook to comply with the state and federal laws. And motion to approve the LP gas quote to Premier Co-op for transportation in 24-25. And that is it.
Thank you. So I move to approve the consent agenda items as presented. Do I have a second?
I'll second that, please.
Seconded by Mr. Van Landy. Any questions? Strachan?
Aye.
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 Approval of not by agenda. I move to approve the not by agenda. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Mr. Strachan. Any discussion? Aye?
Aye.
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 Information and discussion items, district transfers and vacancies.
Okay, so you'll see that we still have a night custodian up here at the Richland Center High School. So if anybody knows of anyone who is looking for a job in the school district as a night custodian, we would love for them to apply. That's been posted now for several weeks. We have a couple of teaching positions open, a math teacher here at the high school, 40% speech and language position primarily up here at the high school, cross cat teacher at both the high school and the intermediate school, two separate positions, and then a clerical aide, which is still in the posting stage, that's posted until Wednesday. And then, you'll notice that the building admin assistant is on hold. That is pending board action later tonight under the 24-25 staffing changes. And then, all of the transfers, vacancies, assignments that the board had been aware of at the last board meeting are listed below. Any questions from the board? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. 9B, new policy 2267.
Okay, my computer is loading the page here. All right, so with the new Title IX regulations at the federal level, school districts have until August 1st to have a new policy that addresses these Title IX regulations, and you have to have that in place by August 1st of this year. We actually have a policy 2264, which is also addressing Title IX and how complaints are handled. However, one of the primary differences in the two policies, although they're fairly similar, one of the primary differences is the procedures in which they're followed if there is an allegation, okay? And so, because there are two separate pathways, any conduct that would occur prior to August 1st goes under the old policy, 2264. Any allegations of conduct that would occur after August 1st, on or after, would fall under the new policy, 2266. So that's the reason why we have two policies and not just a revision of the old. They will both have to stand in our policy book until the statute of limitations runs out on anything that happens prior to August 1st, and then, we'll be able to eliminate policy 2264. There's been a couple of questions from board members regarding the policy and what happens if we did not have it in place by August 1, and then, what is the status on the legal district courts that are going on in the nation? So, I'm going to read this. This is from WASB, because I'm afraid if I paraphrase it, I may miss something or misinterpret it, so forgive me. But this is from the Wisconsin Association of School Business, our school boards, WASB. It says, "All K-12 public school districts receive some federal funding and, as a result, must comply with Title IX regulations or risk losing federal funding. In the absence of any legal challenges that cause a delay, the new regulations will take effect on August 1, 2024." Okay, so then, the question is, well, what about these legal challenges that are going on? And so, WASB continues to say, "As of late June 2024, at least two federal district courts, i.e. lower-level federal trial courts, around the country have enjoined or blocked the implementation and enforcement of the 2024 Title IX regulations. However, the injunctions issued by these courts apply only to those states that have joined the litigation as parties to the lawsuit. The state of Wisconsin is not currently participating as a party in any of the lawsuits that are challenging the regulations. Therefore, as of late June 2024, the regulations are still scheduled to take effect in Wisconsin on August 1, 2024. As the district court rulings in other areas of the country are appealed, the status of the injunctions and the effect of the litigation on recipients of federal education funding in Wisconsin could also change." So in a nutshell, federal law is telling us that we have to have a policy that addresses this on the books. By August 1, will we risk losing some of federal funding or Title and USDA food meal reimbursements in particular? And so, according to our policies, in order for a new policy to take effect, we first have a first reading. That is what this policy is on the agenda for tonight on, getting any information. If the board has any questions, we can get that information. At the next board meeting, then, there would be a public hearing specifically on this policy, and then, the board would look to take action on this policy so that we have it in place by August 1 and be in compliance with the federal guidelines or the law. So, it's a lot in a nutshell. It's all there. There's a summary under Title IX notes in the memo. That's from Neola. Neola had summarized that, put in some bullet points to make it easy to digest. Happy to try to answer any questions, but if you do have questions, I may need to get either legal guidance or get some digging into to get the answers.
I have a clarifying question, but you won't need guidance. You had mentioned in your description of doing away with policy 2264, yet our agenda labels this as new policy 2264. So will that be supplementing our previous on August 1?
I'm sorry, I may have misspoke there. Once the statute of limitation runs out, I believe it's five years, but that may not be exact. But when the statute of limitation runs out, 2266 will be eliminated, and we will only have 2264. If I missed that out, I apologize.
Yeah, I may have misunderstood as well. Thanks. I had a couple. Will the Chevron defeasance, is that it, that the Supreme Court ruled on? Will that have a play into this as well?
As of what WASB is saying right now, no, but I suppose it could indirectly affect how some of these other courts are ruling.
Okay. And then, in the summary from Neola, it states that there's still regulations being worked out, but they won't come until after the election. So, that worries me, that we're supposed to just blindly approve something that we have no knowledge of. Well, I mean, this thing is massive. It's over 1,500 pages if you get into Title IX. And then, one of the other problems I have with it is our Title IX coordinator is basically the investigator, the jury, and the executioner, if you want to use that word, for anything that happens. So I have mixed feelings on that, because one person's controlling the whole scenario from taking the complaint, doing the investigation, and then handing out the punishment, if there is punishment to be handed out.
Yep. I think I can try to answer those, or at least comment on them. The new policy gives schools a little bit more latitude in how they handle it. As far as our procedures, I don't envision our procedures really changing. We have two Title IX coordinators. People Services Sean Josell handles any student claims. Amber Bingham is our other Title IX coordinator. She handles any employee, with each one serving as kind of a backup to the other, okay? If there was a complaint or an issue that got brought up, they would be the coordinator, and they would assign an investigator to investigate it. It would not be the same person. We would try to do building administrator where the incident did not occur, okay? If it happened at the intermediate school, we'd get one of the other administrators to be the investigator, and then, that would leave the appeal process open for the superintendent, okay? My understanding from Neola is that smaller schools don't have the manpower, and therefore, they needed some mediency and how many people it takes, and so, a really, really small school could have one person filling multiple roles. I don't envision us needing to have that. I understand. I forget what your other question was. Your first comment there about after the election?
Well, it says, "For those reasons, clients on the supplemental part," there were three pages.
The attachment?
Yeah. Let's see, it's page 1, paragraph 2, the last sentence. It says, "Proposed regulations were issued April 13, 2023. Our final regulations are not expected until potentially after the November 2024 election."
What page, Mr. Dowdner?
It was the first page of that. On the special update Title IX. It's from Neola.
I believe that, again, I'm happy to get anything that I can answer, I'm happy to get clarification on, but I believe that that is specific to student athletic participation and not the Title IX as a whole.
Right, but it's still part of it.
Sure. Is there something you would like me to ask either our general legal counsel or Neola?
No, I just don't know why we approve it when there's still more stuff coming. And basically, why we're being forced to approve it.
Yeah, I don't know the answer to the second question. The first would be to be in compliance and not risk funding, but yeah.
One of the opportunities that we will have, like any policy, is the opportunity to revise if we need to. As more information comes out, we'd be able to make adjustments and changes.
Or even waive it if one of the courts has a ruling that affects us. Yeah, I know this, it definitely seems to me like this was a hurry-up-and-wait kind of a thing. We were supposed to get this a year and a half ago. We just got it, and now, they're forcing everybody to adopt something in a relatively short period of time, and it's a mammoth policy. I guess I would say that one of the advantages of having a company like Neola handle a lot of our policies is that they can be the experts on this, and we can just try to be in compliance. This allows us to be in compliance, with the caveat that we may have to make some revisions, and whether that come from Mr. String or come from WASB or come from Neola, at least we would be in compliance as a brand. I understand.
Any further discussion? Moving on to action items 10A, selection of mobile bid.
So, as Mr. Hunter alluded to earlier, the Buildings, Property, and Transportation Committee did meet prior to tonight's meeting to open up the bid specs, and I believe that they're ready to make a recommendation. I think you kind of spoiler earlier. So, Mr. Hunter, do you want to revisit the recommendation from Buildings Property?
Yeah, it was a unanimous decision to purchase two mowers at $17,800 each from McFarlands and Sauk City. We had five bids, some locals, some outside of our immediate area, and there were some significant discrepancies, and I think we're all pleased with the direction that we're heading.
This met all of the specs.
Correct. Yep. Yeah, there were a few that came back in and did, they had some concerning electric versus hydraulic, for example, that was not as favorable for our needs, which kind of excluded, I think, two vendors and, yeah, so McFarland-Sauk City.
I'll entertain a motion for that, if you would just.
I'll move that to accept bid.
Do I have a second?
A second.
Motion made by Mr. Van Landy, seconded by Mr. Hunter. Any further discussion?
Yeah, can we use it? On our own property? Those are nice. Those are really nice. So, being a little bit suspicious.
All right, Mr. Van Landy?
Aye.
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 10B, 24-25 staffing changes.
Okay, so we have been talking internally about making some of our administrative assistants at the intermediate school and the primary school full-time position. This was something that I was kind of in the back of my head, thinking that we would do maybe a year from now, going into next summer, just to be able to keep our buildings open as administrators have vacations, our current administrative assistants have floating days where they can cover some days in the summer, but with summer school and just being able to be available for families that may want to enroll in our district, it's problematic to keep it fully staffed. We have a situation where we have one resignation and opening at each the intermediate school and the primary school right now. So this seems like a great time to be able to make that transition. And so, the recommendation is that we look at approving a staffing change for one administrative assistant at each building, primary school and the intermediate school, to be a full-time position, and make that so that we can hire for that position immediately. So, the high school already has a full-time position. They actually have two. This would allow our administrators to not only be full-time, but to have one administrative assistant as well in each of the two buildings. Any questions on that ask? The positions that we would not be filling are already benefit-eligible. They would just have the ability to now accrue vacation and then work a few more days. So it's fairly budget-friendly.
So if the current administrative assistant that didn't resign wants to apply for that role and they accept it, then we will then have to replace that position?
Correct. Yep, that's correct.
Any further questions? Any further questions? I move to approve the 2024-25 staffing changes as presented. Can I get a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Dugna. Further discussion? Mr. Dugna?
Aye.
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 10C, revised policy 0100.
Okay, so the next four agenda items, or the next three, I should say, have gone through the policy committee and are being recommended by the policy committee. The first one being simply definitions. There are a few statutory language out there where a student can take a certain number of courses or classes in the public school. And we had nothing in our definitions that defined what a course or a class was, especially now that we have a block schedule primarily at Richland Center High School. And so if you scroll down into the definitions, you'll see in green, there's a definition there to define what a class or a course is, which is essentially the equivalent of approximately a 45-minute instructional period. And this will help give some guidance for homeschool students that are coming into our buildings for up to two classes or other situations like that. So that is the recommendation from the policy committee making that change.
Can I get a motion to approve policy 0100 definitions?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Ms. Troxell. Can I get a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Dugna. Further discussion? Mr. Huntermore?
Aye.
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 10D, revised policy 5851, school events on Wednesdays and holidays.
Okay, so similarly, this also is coming from the policy committee. This is trying to be proactive for things that could happen in the future because of things that have happened in the past. And so specifically, the changes to this particular policy for school events on Wednesdays, Sundays, and holidays is the change that if there is a WIAA tournament event where it has been rescheduled for a Wednesday, okay, which happens specifically in the spring, it might start off on a Tuesday and then due to rain or weather circumstances, it gets pushed back to Wednesday. That's what letter A is revising, the ability to not have to have a special board meeting that if it's a WIAA event, a tournament event, that that can be done on a Wednesday. Also, there are times when these WIAA tournament events get scheduled for the Tuesday after Memorial Day. Okay? And if our teams are successful to advance to the next level of tournaments, it would be nice if they could get a practice in. The practice prior to the tournament game would be on a holiday. Therefore, the ask is that we would allow on a voluntary basis them to have a, those particular teams that are affected, to have a voluntary practice sometime after 5 o'clock on the Memorial Day holiday. Still give families an opportunity to have the extended weekend. They'll be back for voluntary practice the night before. Also, to address the bans participating in the Memorial Day parade. That was never addressed in policy, so is cleaning this up. That would allow them to have that. And then finally, letter H. It used to say senior class night may be scheduled on the Wednesday night prior to graduation. The Wednesday night immediately following, preceding graduation isn't always the best time to have it. It might be the Wednesday before that. So this simply says that senior class night, which is also our scholarship night, may be scheduled on a Wednesday night in May prior to graduation. So those are the changes that we were looking to make and again, coming from the policy committee. Any questions on any of those changes?
So the motion would be to accept the recommendation from the policy committee and approve the revisions to policy 5851, school events on Wednesdays, Sundays, and holidays as presented, effective immediately. Does it so move? Motion by Mr. Van Landy, second.
I'll second.
Seconded by Ms. Troxell. Further discussion? Ms. Troxell?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
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 10E, revised policy 8500, food service.
Okay, and the revisions for this one are in a PDF because it was quite lengthy. But essentially, this policy, it's some changes to our food service policy. And this addresses non-medical dietary requests. So we already had language in there that, how we would handle and accommodate students with medical conditions where they had a dietary request. This addresses the non-medical. And essentially, Mr. Huntermore, correct me if I'm wrong, but essentially, it says that we can accommodate, but we're not obligated to if it's a non-medical restriction. Is that correct?
Can I get a motion to accept the recommendation from the policy committee to approve the revisions to policy 8500, food service as presented, effective immediately?
I'll make it.
Motion by Mr. Huntermore. Can I get a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Dugna. Any further discussion? Aye?
Aye.
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 10F, revision to policy 3426, early retirement for teachers.
Okay, so the board acted at our last meeting on the early retirement policy, knowing that it could come back in a future meeting after it was vetted by our legal counsel. We put it on the agenda. I did not know if we would get anything back. I got it back about 4 o'clock this afternoon. So I updated the information. It is in red. I can tell you, because you probably don't have it in front of you or if you have a laptop or a computer, it would be there. The integrity of the policy completely stays intact. Mr. String has added some, a little bit more in-depth language preceding each section of it that really gets into the legal parts of how is it established in terms of being eligible, what they can use the money for, et cetera, trying to cover all of that. The rest of it, and it really doesn't change anything contextually, in my opinion, the rest of it, there are big sections of red and then big sections of crossover. Really, there's just minor word changes in there, but it was easier for me to copy and paste the entire red instead of missing something. So that's why there's bigger chunks in there. But again, the entire integrity of the policy is in place. If the board is willing to act on that, we can do that tonight and have it be in full force. If the board feels like we got this information a little late and you want to review it, I totally understand that too, and we could postpone it until the 22nd meeting. But if you've got a chance to read it, you'll see that it really didn't change anything contextually.
We discussed this in pretty good detail last time at the meeting and then also at the closed meeting. And I myself, being a benefactor of a program very similar to this many years ago, I would move that we accept that at this time.
We have a motion on the floor to accept the revisions to policy 3426. Do I have a second for that?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Mr. Huntermore. Any further discussion?
Can I just add that, effective immediately?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Board. Any questions? Mr. Van Landy?
Aye.
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 Aye. I move that we go into closed session pursuant to statutes 19.851(c) and/or (f) as appropriate to consider employment, promotion, and compensation of employees for purposes of discussing individual hiring, employee hiring, and compensation in Wisconsin statutes 19.851(f) and Wisconsin statutes 118.125 to discuss student open enrollment applications and individual pupil information related to those applications. The board may take action on these issues in closed sessions if necessary and appropriate. At the conclusion of the closed session, the board will entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Troxell. Any discussion on that? Everybody want to stick around? Mr. Dugna?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone.